I would like to call to order the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for March 24, 2020, 7:00 PM. I'd ask the folks on the line to mute your phones if you could, and I'd like to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely by telephone as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all telephone communications during this meeting may be reported by the Town of Hingham and is being reported by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. Good evening, everyone. You know, I know I speak for my colleagues and the staff to say that we miss being with you at Town Hall. We miss Bob. We miss being on Channel 9. But we are so fortunate that we're able to continue the business of the town pursuant to this alternate means. So, thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening. We will move to the approval in the minutes, and I believe we've got three sets of minutes.
Yes, I've reviewed the minutes of March 3, March 9, and March 12, and I am prepared to move for the acceptance unless others have comments.
Mary, do you have any comments with respect to March 3 or March 12?
No.
In that event, I will... Great. In that case, I would take a motion.
So, I move to accept the minutes, to approve the minutes dated March 3, March 9, and March 12, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor? Any further discussion?
Aye.
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 Great, okay.
Can I just clarify, Karen? I think John has advised us that, and I should have told you this earlier, I apologize, has advised us that we do roll call votes for all votes while we're on the conference call meetings.
Oh, great, okay. Joe?
I vote aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Chair Karen votes aye. Thank you. Okay, so I think the first thing we all thought was important that we do is to update you with respect to where we are in terms of our COVID preparedness. That update will be handled by our Town Administrator, Mr. Mayo. For the folks that are on the line, let me just outline how we intend to proceed this evening. So, as you know, for those of you who watch or attend our meetings, what typically happens is we will hear a presentation either from Town Hall staff or, you know, your fellow citizens. The board itself will be able to ask questions in the comments with respect to that presentation. I will turn first to Joe and then to Mary, and then I'll make any final comments, and then I would open it up to the public to make brief comments on items on the agenda. You know, that obviously on a conference call line is a little tricky, so I'd ask folks that would like to speak to identify themselves by name. If there are, you know, several folks that would like to be heard on a particular matter, what I do is ask you one at a time to identify yourself. I'll keep a list, and then I'll tick through the list and recognize you one by one if you don't mind. I think, you know, we're all going to have to cooperate here because it is a little bit... It's just a little bit difficult since I can't see you to be able to recognize you and keep order in the meeting. So, that's the way we intend to proceed this evening. So, I would like to turn to Tom Mayo to take us through the Town of Hingham COVID-19 update.
Great. Thank you Chairman Johnson. So, this is a Hingham Health Department Health Advisory from the Hingham Health Department. So, I'll just read it as it's written. The Hingham Health Department has been notified by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health that we have a second laboratory confirmed case. The Hingham resident has tested positive for COVID-19. All notifications have been made per DPH guidelines. We also subsequently urge that everyone take everyday preventative actions. All persons are urged to maintain social distancing, six feet away from other people. No gatherings of over 10 people. This does not apply to grocery stores, farmers' markets, food pantries, banks, and pharmacies; however, they should also be maintaining social distancing. Only essential services are to be in operation in the Commonwealth. Clean your hands often by using soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If soap and water are not available, use a hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. To the extent possible, avoid touching high-touch surfaces in public places, elevator buttons, door handles, handrails, shaking with people, etc., handshaking with people. Using a tissue or a sleeve to cover your hand or finger if you must touch something. Avoid touching your face, nose, eyes, etc., and practice routine cleaning of frequently touched surfaces, for example, tables, doorknobs, light switches, handles, desks, toilets, faucets, sinks, and cellphones. Watch for symptoms including fever, cough, and shortness of breath, and if you feel like you're developing symptoms, call your doctor. That's the health advisory I have for the COVID-19 update, Karen.
Thank you very much. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, Tom, do you want to discuss just in general any updates with respect to the town's response to COVID-19 at this point, or are you going to cover that later?
We will cover that. Karen, I don't know how you want to do this. I think Michelle is ready with that kind of an update.
Sure, why don't we do that? And then, Joe, I'll come back to you to see if you have any questions after Michelle's update. Thank you. Michelle? So, I guess before I continue, I should... I was going to do this, and I'm sorry, I forgot. You have on the line from the town, Selectman Joe Fisher, Selectman Mary Power, Selectman Karen Johnson, Town Administrator Tom Mayo, Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Montegier, and I've got Council John Coughlin is on the line for the town as well. So, I now recognize Michelle.
Thanks Karen. So, we've been hard at work behind the scenes trying to keep everything going. In the meantime, we have an emergency management team that meets daily via conference call to stay on top of the latest COVID-19 developments, information from the state and federal government, and how we're implementing those state and federal directives or guidance at the local level. That emergency management team is led by Fire Chief Steve Murphy, who's also our Emergency Management Director, and it also includes Police Chief Glenn Olson, Deputy Police Chief David Jones, Deputy Fire Chief Lula Chance, our Executive Health Officer Susan Sarnie, Tom, and myself. Our Health Department is really at the forefront of this crisis, as you know. Susan Sarnie and her team have been doing an amazing job and working around the clock, literally, to stay on top of this. They're in daily communication with the Mass Department of Public Health and the CDC. They're in contact with any confirmed COVID-19 cases and close contacts in town. They've been reaching out to all of our food establishments and businesses to make sure that they're complying with and understand recent orders, and they're working closely with municipal and school staff as we all shift our operations in this changing landscape. Our Public Safety Team also remains in regular contact with state and regional authorities. Susan Sarnie is talking to her counterparts in other communities, and Tom's talking with our state representatives on a weekly basis. We are doing our best to keep municipal services running while adhering to social distancing guidelines and protecting staff and residents. So, for example, our police, fire, and public works teams, as well as our 911 dispatchers at the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, continue to provide vital services to the community. Chief Murphy, Chief Olson, and Randy Sylvester have put protocols in place for their departments to physically separate staff where possible, to clean and disinfect vehicles and equipment after each use, things like that. Although our senior center is closed, staff there are still coordinating Meals on Wheels because that's an essential service facilitated, needed rides for a resident to get to his dialysis appointments every week, and they're also reaching out to seniors at Baxter Street and the Lincoln School Apartments to make sure that they've got what they need and to know that there's just another resource to call should they need groceries, errands, things like that. In an effort to help prevent the spread of coronavirus, we have very limited staff accessing Town Hall twice a week on a staggered basis to process things like payroll, bills, and the mail, some of the paper things that we still need to physically go in for. But we're really trying to limit folks to make sure that there's not a lot of interaction between people. Otherwise, our departments are working remotely to the best of their ability. We're all available via email and phone. We've tried to consolidate that contact information about how to reach all of our departments on the town website under our main COVID-19 page. So, if you need something, please reach out. Like, we'll do our best to accommodate people's requests during this time. I do have to give a huge shout out to our IT department, who's been working nonstop to help get our staff up and running remotely, to help us consolidate our messaging on the website, and to get these important communications out to the community through the various channels. We're also... Tom and I are holding department head meetings via conference call twice a week. So, on Mondays and Wednesdays, we're checking in with all of our folks, and we've also been working closely with Town Council throughout this process.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Joe, questions or comments?
Well, thank you to Michelle and Tom really for incredible work in putting this together and in these circumstances when we really don't know what's next. I know the selectmen have been actively involved. I've been involved getting updates from Tom and Michelle, as well as from Chief Olson, Chief Murphy. I've participated in the updates that the Lieutenant Governor has been so gracious to be handling. The Mass Municipal Association's been very active, and I know that we're making sure that the other town boards that need to function are functioning. It's a massive effort, but I think we're really on top of it moving forward, and there will be issues, and every day there'll be new issues, and we are doing our best to stay on top. So, just really thank you, Tom and Michelle, for getting this to where we are now and knowing that we'll have you going forward to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Very well said, Joe. Thank you. Mary, any questions or comments?
Just a question and a comment. I completely agree, Joe. Very well said. I am so grateful to our dedicated, hard-working employees who are... Everybody is pulling together to try and provide services and make sure that our critical resources are working in a safe environment. I'm proud of the work. I'm just so grateful for everyone. Michelle, if, for the benefit of people participating in this call who may not be aware, could you please just briefly describe the COVID-19 webpage on the website? That's a helpful resource, and I would like to make sure everyone is aware of it.
Sure, Mary. So, this is something that Kate Richardson was really instrumental in setting up. If you go to the Hingham homepage, you'll see a button on the left... Let me just go there really quick. You'll see a button on the left that says COVID-19 Updates and Alerts, and then a huge bar in the middle of the page that says COVID-19 Update Center for the Town of Hingham. So, that's where... You can get there through either of those links. And what we've done here is tried to... Every alert that we've put down via... Or put out via a news flash and an email notification, and usually a Facebook post, we post it here on this main COVID-19 Updates page. So, they're listed from most recent to the older ones. We all... On the right side of the page, we have something called Key Information, which talks about what's open and what's closed right now in terms of the different departments and services that we offer. On the left-hand side, we have a link, COVID-19 Contact Information, and that will take you to a page that has email addresses and phone numbers, the best way to reach all the departments, and short blurbs about who's doing what and what services are available right now. We do have staff in every department who are checking the voicemails and checking the email accounts every day. So, like I said, if people need something, please reach out, and we'll get back to you. On the top left of this page, we also have something called COVID-19 Community Notices, and that's where we're posting information from different businesses, organizations, etc., in the community about what services they're running, what restaurants are open for takeout, things like that. This is not the town endorsing any specific organization. We're just trying to get the information out there about what's available right now.
Thank you. Mary, anything further?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank all of you. I concur with Mary. I think with Tom and Michelle's leadership, I think... I know Kate Richardson and Steve Becker from our IT department worked, you know, worked day and night to get us to a platform where we could begin to conduct town business virtually, and I just can't say enough about that quick turnaround and leadership in that regard. You know, I'd also give a shout out to our citizens. I mean, I think that you have displayed discipline and patience in dealing with this. We need to continue to rely on you for that. We are trying our very best to make sure that critical services and necessary services of the town continue uninterrupted. I think, you know, you never wish for something like this, but to see how people have really risen to the occasion, made themselves available, really, in some cases are working, you know, far more hours than we might expect at Town Hall to make sure that they can deliver the kind of services that we all rely on here in town. I think that we have a great team in place, and I think, again, the leadership from the Town Administrator has been essential to the town's, I think, comprehensive response to this unprecedented health emergency. So, I thank you all from the bottom of my heart for that. I know we are all worried about our local businesses. The Board of Selectmen is, you know, has said on more than one occasion, "We are committed to the vitality of our commercial tax base here in town," and, as Michelle said, I think we're trying to facilitate communication around those restaurants and services that are open for business. We've been in touch with Lynn Barclay for the, you know, who is the business contact for the folks in the square. You know, we are mindful of how upsetting and disruptive this is for you in particular and for all of us. One call-in number, I guess I wanted to highlight on that list that you mentioned, Michelle, is just the Town Social Worker. We do have access to that service. Employees have access as well to their employee assistance line, but we do have social worker access, so if you are struggling, you can certainly rely on that resource, and we would encourage you to do just that. So, we are open for business, and we are trying to make you aware of how you can access those services as efficiently as possible. So, at this point, I would... We will take up a declaration of a state of emergency related to COVID, but at this point, I'd like to open it up to members of the public who may want to ask a question or make a brief comment with respect to the COVID-19 update. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard at this point?
This is Kirk Schultz.
Kirk, how are you?
Very well. I'm listening, and I'll be in the background if any question needs to be asked of me, but I don't have anything to add.
Great. Thanks for being on the line, Kirk.
Thank you, Karen.
Anybody else who'd wish to be heard at this point on the COVID-19 update? Okay, if we could move then to the... Pardon me? I'd like to move now to the next item on the agenda, which is the Declaration of the State of Emergency. So, you know, the Governor has declared a state of emergency. The President of the United States has declared a state of emergency. Various municipalities around the Commonwealth have declared their own state of emergency. There are certain, I think, legal ramifications of a state and federal declaration of emergency. It's less clear, I think, from a legal standpoint, what our declaration of a state of emergency does, but I think that it's an important statement by the town that we recognize the seriousness of the issue that is before us and that we are pledging to abide consistently with the rules and the proclamations and the orders handed down either from the federal government or the Governor's office. And I think this is a way to stand with our friends and neighbors across the Commonwealth in recognizing the importance of our actions during this period. And so, I think that's... It's in that sentiment that we bring this forward, I think, for the board to consider. And I would turn to Joe Fisher, if you have questions or comments with respect to the Declaration of State of Emergency out of Hingham.
No, I think you've summed it up, and I've noted that there are many, many towns and communities across the state that have issued their own declarations of a state of emergency. So, we're not breaking any new ground here, and I think it's the right thing to do just to make sure that we're in a position to coordinate and possibly obtain any available assistance and resources from the state and federal government.
I agree. Mary, questions or comments?
No, I agree with everything Joe said.
Tom and Michelle, anything to add?
Good, thank you.
Nothing for me, thank you.
And John Coughlin, anything you'd care to add on the State of Emergency Declaration?
Nope, other than we took samples from many other towns, and we tried to combine it into one document that I think covers everything that we need to do. So, I think it's in the proper form to vote on.
Okay. So, I will read this, and I don't... Maybe I'll read it, and then I will ask if there are any questions or comments from members of the audience, just so in case you don't have it in front of you, you know what we're voting on. So, the proclamation says, "Town of Hingham, Massachusetts Declaration of State of Emergency. Whereas the 2019 novel Corona COVID-19 has been declared a public health emergency of international concern by the World Health Organization, and whereas COVID-19 is a highly contagious, in some cases fatal respiratory disease, and whereas on March 10, 2020, the Governor of Massachusetts declared a state of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 public health emergency, and whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared a state of emergency concerning the COVID-19 public health emergency, and whereas the COVID-19 public health emergency poses a present, reasonable, and imminent danger to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the residents and employees of the Town of Hingham, and whereas it is necessary for the Town Administrator and his designees to utilize and coordinate the services, supplies, equipment, and facilities of the departments, offices, and agencies of the Town of Hingham and the community, both locally, regionally, statewide, and nationally if necessary, including the taking of ordinary and extraordinary actions for the purposes of emergency to protect the residents and employees of the Town of Hingham. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hingham hereby declares a state of emergency in the Town of Hingham effective as of March 13, 2020, as a result of the COVID-19 public health emergence, in order to allow the Town Administrator and his designees to take all necessary actions to prevent, minimize, or mitigate damage to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the residents and employees of the Town of Hingham, and do hereby appoint the Town Administrator to act as the Director of the Local Organization of Civil Defense under Section 13 of Chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950, the Civil Defense Act, and do hereby authorize the Town Administrator and his designees to exercise all emergency powers on behalf of the Town of Hingham. This declaration shall remain in effect for the duration of the state of emergency as declared by the Governor of Massachusetts, whereas otherwise sooner rescinded, and it will be voted on shortly by your Board of Selectmen. Are there any questions from the public with respect to the Declaration of the State of Emergency in the Town of Hingham brought on by the COVID-19 health emergency? So, I'm hearing no questions from the public at this point. Joe or Mary, do you have any further comments or questions with respect to the declaration as presented?
Yes, this is Joe. So, I believe that the declaration should include and was amended to include that we're acting to protect the residents, businesses, and employees of the Town of Hingham. So, I think the version that you read was limited to residents and employees, and the declaration is... As we're doing this, we are ratifying the Declaration of the State of Emergency declared by the Town Administrator effective March 13, 2020. So, those two modifications should be made to the declaration, and I believe you have a copy of the declaration that reflects those changes.
I'm not seeing that, Joe, right now. And it wasn't my understanding... It wasn't my understa... Go ahead. Tom?
Nope. Nope, I just... I'm looking for the new version. It was sent probably around 4 o'clock.
I had sent that out by email, Tom, late this afternoon to everyone. I don't know the exact time, but...
I did see John's email, but I didn't, you know, I was looking at my agenda package.
Sure.
So, I certainly wasn't aware that Tom called a state of emergency, declared a state of emergency on March 13. I think he made... I thought he made personnel decisions on March 13 to close Town Hall. So, I don't know that I'm comfortable with that change to the declaration, Joe.
Honestly, I think it's kind of irrelevant. I think that, Erin, what John Coughlin and I had done was we just traded an email where to get the date as early as possible, I was using my, you know, position. Quite honestly, the position doesn't hold that level of authority to do it, but I was trying to get that level of... I was trying to get the date as early as possible. So, John Coughlin and I traded an email suggesting that I had adopted what we had written and were going to put in front of you guys tonight to ratify. But we don't have to do that. I don't think it's going to matter. There's very few... I just don't think that it's going to matter. John, I don't know if you have any comment?
No, I think this one is effective March 13 also, so I think we've got it covered either way. Again, with these local declarations, there's not a lot of case law precedent for them. So, I think, you know, I think we just do the best we can, and we, you know, we adopt it back to that date. I do think the version that I sent out this afternoon, we did add business in there, and we did change one of the terms from reasonable to real. You know, not... So, I think, you know, we could probably, Joe, we could probably make a motion to just, you know, adopt the most recent version, and we can take out the ratification language if we want to go that route, and I think that would be perfectly fine, too.
Well, why don't I bring up your email and read that one without the ratification language? I just, you know, I think we can make this effective as of the 13th.
Yeah, I think so, too, Karen. I think you're right.
And that's the way it reads now, and it's the way it's drafted now, Karen.
Okay.
So, the last sentence of the "now therefore" paragraph, the last sentence has the ratification language. You can just exclude that, but the rest of it would be appropriate.
This was the email we received at 2:38?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Karen, it's funny. It was just one of those things we were trying to get in line, just to make sure that we were covered. So, you guys doing it this way, retroactive, is probably the right way to do it.
Yeah, just, you know, as you and I discussed, I was concerned about it. Yeah. Let me see if I can pull that up. Okay. Sorry, everybody. That's a good...
So, there were two documents in that email, Karen?
Yep, I got that. Yep.
Yep, okay.
Karen, I have it up if you need.
I have it. I'm just trying to figure out...
So, the only changes would be where it says residents and employees. It would include residents, businesses, and employees, and those two, anywhere that appears. And then there was, at the beginning, I think it said that it posed a... And, Joe, you may remember the words better, and I don't have it in front of me, but it said it was a reasonable danger. We changed that to a real danger. Things have changed even in the last week, so...
Yeah, poses a present, real, and imminent danger.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think you could take a vote to adopt it as, you know, as amended excluding the ratification language if you wanted, or you could, you know, you could read it again. But in substance, it's the same. It's just those small amendments.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I would prefer not to include the ratification language.
Yeah.
Is it... I mean, Joe or Mary, do you feel strongly about including it?
I don't feel strongly. I understand why it was there, but if you're concerned, I'm not going to push that one.
Okay. Mary?
Same.
Okay. Okay, well, then, I think it's probably just easier to adopt the vote as John's proposed it. But before we do that, I'd just ask one more time before we vote on this. Are there any questions from the public with respect to the Declaration of the State of Emergency?
This is Carol Meyer. Can you hear me?
Hi, Carol.
Oh, hi. Sorry. Just because I can't ask you afterwards, is it possible to get copies of these emails? Because it's a little fuzzy connection to get all the wording.
For this new... For this new declaration?
Yeah, the declaration, and then, yeah, that would be helpful if I could get a copy. That's only because I can't ask you after the meeting because it's not live.
Yep. Yep, we can get you that.
Because it's a little fuzzy. Yeah, the connection's a little fuzzy, that's all. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, we can email that to Carol.
Tom, am I correct that in addition to the declaration, there's a letter that will accompany it, that you can include both when you send it?
Yes, we can email that to Carol.
Tom, am I correct that in addition to the declaration, there's a letter that will accompany it, that you can include both when you send that?
Yes.
And Tom, when you, before you send it, we should delete that ratification language if that's not going to be in there. It's in a Word version. I can do that or something.
Yeah, if you want to do that, John, just send me the corrected version with the new cover letter. I'll forward it to Carol.
Okay, yeah, I'm not at the office now.
Okay, I can do that. I will.
Joe, you can do that? Okay, thanks.
I'll get that handled.
Okay. Is there any reason I need to read the cover letter?
No, I think that's more just an announcement, but as long as everybody's read it and is comfortable.
Other than it's beautiful prose, no.
Thank Tom.
Do you want me to read it?
Oh, no, no.
Not that long.
Oh, man, I'm never gonna get it read.
I think we should just read the concluding sentence of that letter.
I'm gonna read the, I'm gonna read the letter.
Yeah.
The COVID-19 update and local declaration of state of emergency. This is the letter.
Excuse me, Karen, before you read it, do we want to do a vote on the declaration? So then the letter will actually make sense.
The letter says you've adopted it, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 let's do that. All right.
Roll call vote on that, too.
I think we've discussed this to death, so I would accept the motion.
I move that to adopt and sign the Declaration of Emergency in the form as amended, as amended by Town Council.
Second.
And we need a roll call vote on that.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Nope.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Okay. Passed unanimously. Okay, the letter, the much anticipated letter, says, "The Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen has voted to declare a local state of emergency for the Town of Hingham effective March 13, 2020. This declaration was made as a practical measure to make sure that the Town of Hingham is in the best position to take all actions necessary to protect the public health, safety, or general welfare of its residents and employees, and to ensure that the Town of Hingham may fully coordinate with and obtain any available assistance and resources from the state and from federal government. During Hingham's nearly 400 years of existence, this town has always cared for our neighbors and our friends. We look out for each other. Our social bonds and cultural awareness set us apart. It is in that vein that we're asking you to please take seriously the state and federal guidelines surrounding social distancing. Congregating even in small groups can result in the inadvertent spread of COVID-19. We have closed or altered our delivery of many local government functions in an effort to help slow this pandemic and thereby keep our residents and employees safe. For information relating to the Town of Hingham services, please visit our website, www.hingham-ma.gov. As with all things in life, a calm, measured response to even the worst situations will most often result in the best possible outcomes. We ask that you follow government guidelines, including social distancing, with typical Hingham boys. Let's continue to be civil, look out for our neighbors, especially the elderly, and we'll get through this crisis together. Thank you. You're a Board of Selectmen." And thank you, thank you all. Thank you, Tom and Michelle for this, and John.
The only, the only thing on that one, Karen, quickly, in the first paragraph, we should probably add business, make it consistent, Joe. Joe, can you make that change?
Yep, I've done it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thanks.
Other than that, it really is a beautiful piece of prose, so. It's definitely worth reading. So you see, we haven't lost our sense of humor here on the board.
That's right. You have, you have to laugh.
That's right. Okay, we're going to move to the discussion and vote to adopt. Our website is the official method for posting open meeting law notices. So, you know, under the open meeting law, public bodies have to post an agenda of their meetings at least 48 hours prior to the time that they will meet. And our official posting location is actually Town Hall, which is now closed. And so it doesn't make much sense to use Town Hall as our official posting location. I think John Cofflin will take us through this a little bit, but we are allowed, under the regulations to the open meeting law, to select an alternate posting location, which could include our town website. And if we do that, there's certain notifications that we have to make to the Attorney General's Office, and we need to post something actually at Town Hall that will let all of you now know that the official posting location would be our website should we vote to adopt this tonight. I mean, my reaction to this when I'm reading it was, I think, I think most people, as a practical matter, look to the website now to get the information about public meetings in town. But this would make it the official place for us to list, you know, all agendas and all public meetings for, you know, for open meeting law posting purposes. But John, if you could just maybe take us through this for a minute?
Yeah, sure. So the, the regulations allow us to adopt the municipal website as the official place to post open meetings. That does not preclude us from continuing to post in other locations like Town Hall. But what it means is if we post on the website, it makes the meeting a legal meeting, legally posted, and you don't have to post anywhere else, at least during this, this time period when that's going to be difficult. So, and that can always be, once it's adopted, it can always be amended, and we can revert back to the old way in the future if we want to. But I think during this crisis, it makes sense, and we do have to post a notice that we've done this tomorrow in Town Hall, which we'll do, and we do have to send the AG notice, which we'll do tomorrow, so.
Okay. Joe, any comments or questions on this?
No, I've reviewed the regulations and reviewed the motion, and I think it's absolutely the right thing to do at this point.
Great. Mary?
No questions.
Okay. I, I don't have any questions either, so I will, at this point, open it up to the public. If anybody has a question or a comment with respect to the adoption of the website as the official location for posting public meetings, if anybody has any questions or comments with respect to that, please identify yourself.
I'm Karen, this is Kirk.
Kirk, yep. Could you, Kirk, could you do me a favor to state your name and address for the record?
Kirk Schultz, 65 Prospect Street.
Okay.
What I like about the website for posting is that if there is a mistake in the access code, that hopefully that's something that can be updated rather quickly and changed, because we seem to have that access issue tonight on a different meeting. And so I don't know what the logistics are, but having that instantaneous ability to change that in real time would be very helpful.
Right. Gotcha. Any further questions with respect to the website as the posting location? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
I move that the Board recognize that the website address, www.hingham-ma.gov, is the town's municipal website, website, and to adopt the municipal website as the official method for posting notices pursuant to the open meeting law in accordance with 940 CMR, Section 29.03.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote? Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye.
Okay, that was adopted unanimously as well. And next on the agenda, we have one possible vote for the Taste of Hingham to be held in August 29. And I am, I am so hoping that we're all able to go to Taste of Hingham on August 29. So I think that, you know, to me, this is far enough in advance that I'm comfortable taking it up. And then if, you know, who knows, if we need to think about it again, we can think about it again. But it's certainly a date that's far enough in the future that I would feel comfortable taking it up.
And just so everyone knows, I did speak with, with Chief Olson, and he's good with this new date.
Okay. I just think there's a lot that goes into organizing this, even on a preliminary basis. So, you know, again, I realize it's, it is far enough in the future, but I think there's some preliminary planning that they could undertake virtually that they probably want to get going.
That's exactly right.
Joe, any questions on the approval, the request from the Congregational Church for the Taste of Hingham in August?
No, I would just comment that it's an event that I know many, many residents look forward to, the businesses look forward to, and it's a real place where Hingham comes together, assuming that we are allowed to come together at the end of August. So I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Mary, any, any comments or questions?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Questions or comments from the public with respect to the Taste of Hingham? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Congregational Church Men's Group for the annual Taste of Hingham event to be held on Saturday, August 29, 2020, from 12 o'clock to 3 o'clock PM, with a rain date of Sunday, August 30, 2020, from 12 o'clock to 3 o'clock PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Chair Karen?
Aye.
Okay. So now we have Selectmen and the Town Administrator reports. Tom, anything, Michelle, I'm sorry. Michelle, anything to report this evening?
Nope, nothing further. Thank you.
Tom, anything to report?
Sure. I just wanted to, to just highlight the entirety of the, of the Board, of the local Hingham Board of Health team that's been so active on this, in this crisis. They're led by Susan Sarni. She's our Director of Public Health. She's a superstar and is working around the clock, 24/7 right now. So, and her team consists of Kathy Crowley, our town nurse, Betty Nee, Andrea Benedetto, and Cheryl West, who is our, our social worker. So along with the Board of Health, who had a meeting the other day and empowered Susan with some, some additional authority to, to move, to be able to move more quickly in response to the, to the events as they, as they come up. So their team is just, you know, performing through the roof right now. I couldn't be happier. A lot of towns are looking to Hingham as usual for guidance and leadership, and they're certainly providing it. So thank you to all of them, and hopefully the, the residents in town recognize that they're in good hands.
Yeah, well said. And I think the Board of Health, Peter Bickford, Kirk Schultz, who's on the line tonight, and the Chair, Lizzie Eldridge, have really done an amazing job as a group of volunteers, I think, staying on top of this, and as you suggest, working collaboratively with Susan to, to give Susan the tools that she needs to serve the interests of the town. So I, again, I just, I can't stress enough how proud I am to be part of this team.
Yeah.
Joe, I'm sorry, Tom, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. One last thing. A piece of good news, and this is always helpful in these times. We received, we've actually already been granted, we'll receive a check tomorrow in the amount of a little over $9,000 from the Department of Public Health, in a grant that was, again, put forward by the, by the Department of Public Health in Hingham. And there's another $9,000 following that. So about $18,000 in near-term grants to help offset our additional costs.
Great. We'd like, we'd like our grant money in Hingham.
Yeah, right, right.
Joe?
So I think we've covered a lot. I want to highlight something that I have found unique in these interesting times, is that the Hingham Historical Society, which has canceled all of its public events, or at least postponed them, has do, is doing an ama, amazing job reaching out to the community. Deirdre Anderson, who's the Executive Director, has been sending out emails featuring different moments in Hingham history. It includes written commentary, reading selections, documents, when available, photographs, and artwork. And it's a tremendous way to get a taste of Hingham of as it was in years past. And so I would just really like to thank the Historical Society for, for going out and reaching out to us so that we can continue experiencing what Hingham is all about.
Yeah, absolutely. Mary, anything?
Yeah, a couple things. I just want to remind people on the line, we've mentioned that there are a number of restaurants that are still open and, you know, doing takeout and doing delivery. And I would just remind people that the Greenside Grill at the South Shore Country Club is, is one of those facilities and is an opportunity to support a local business. During tonight's meeting, there have been just so many members of our team, and Karen, I agree with you, I'm so proud to be part of this team. I just want to mention two other individuals who have really gone above and beyond, as all our employees are. Sharon Perfetti was able to complete the warrant on schedule last week, which is just, you know, it's, it's a hard enough task to do when we're all working together. But to do that under these circumstances is just a testament to, to her dedication. And at a time when there are a lot of things that feel very abnormal, it was so nice to get a call from Tom on Friday to say that the warrant had been delivered. I know there's a lot of discussion that has to happen about town meeting, which, you know, those discussions are taking place. But we have completed the warrant, and Sharon obviously was a big part of that. I'd also just give an example of another one of our employees who's going above and beyond the call of duty, and that's Heidi Gall in our office, who is participating in a lot of meetings to help with minutes. Many of our employees are stepping up. We're asking people to help Susan Sarni and her team when it's needed. And just so grateful for everybody stepping in, doing things that perhaps they haven't done before, or having to do them in a, in a different way. And then just one other thing, in terms of, of community support, I just want to make people aware that there is a citizen group called Hingham Link. They have a website called hingamlink.com. And this is an endeavor to try to connect people who would like to help in the community with people who need help in the community. And that help could be a phone call, it could be errands, it could be, take on different forms. And I would just mention that there was an offshoot, a group of citizens led by Jill Police, who have been doing, they call themselves the Face Mask Task Force. They've been working tirelessly for the last three or four days to produce face masks for our healthcare workers and first responders. And it's just another example of how, in very difficult times, this community pulls together and we support one another. So we are just grateful for everybody who is stepping in in these very unusual times.
Well said, Mary. Thank you. I'd just like to offer one bit of maybe normalcy, and that is, you know, this week, the MSBA reached out to the town to see if we were able to stay on track in, with respect to the foster school process. And, you know, together with the school committee, we responded in the affirmative. So we are continuing to pull together the materials and consents and the like that we'll need to deliver to the MSBA to, you know, continue to stay in that pipeline. So again, I think it's another example of people making sure that the essential functions of government and the expectations of the town, you know, that we continue to try to meet those to the very, to the very best of our abilities. And that, you know, that will move forward as, as countless other, you know, projects and, and priorities are, are as well. But I point that one out. So thank you, everybody. I know there's, I see a number of phone numbers online here. So I know that there are a number of folks that took the time to dial in, and we really appreciate it. And we will continue to try to make these meetings as accessible as, as possible. But I, again, appreciate you taking the time to be part of the, the meeting tonight. And unless my colleagues have anything further, I believe a motion to adjourn is in order.
Karen, so if I could just follow up on one thing, Mary mentioned that the Greenside Grill. So Michelle, could you make a note to add them to the, on the Hingham, on the, our website for the community notices? I don't see them listed as one of the options for, for takeout?
Absolutely.
So if we could include the Greenside Grill, I think, I think Mary's point is well taken. And then, this is just a question for the Chair. I don't recall at the beginning of the meeting whether you asked for comments for items that were not on the agenda.
I didn't, Joe, and I don't know that I'm going to do that in this format.
Okay.
You know, we'll, we'll kind of. You know, we'll kind of see as things go along, but we did not include that tonight.
Then I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote? Joe?
Joe Fisher, aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen Johnson? Aye.